Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County November 7th Board of Commissioners meeting. What an absolutely gorgeous day in November. This weather we're having is phenomenal. I'd just like to ask the Reverend David Fryer, who is a retired Episcopal priest, to come forward and give us an invocation.
Thank you. May we gather in prayer. Oh, Lord, you have created us in all our diversity, and you have placed us in community. In particular, this beautiful oceanfront community called Dare County. We have been blessed in many ways. We are gathered here today to do the work of governing, the challenge of bringing together this wonderful diversity into a nurturing community of place where all can live and grow. May we first give thanks for all our public servants who work diligently and competently to manage the infrastructure and services that allow us to all live safely in this community. This morning, be with those who have been elected to serve our community as its governors. Keep them mindful of the continuing task of unifying, caring, and nurturing each of our fellow citizens. Be with them in their deliberations. Give them ears to hear clearly, minds to think clearly, and a spirit of service dedicated to the common good. At the same time, be with all our fellow citizens. May we be responsive to the leadership of these, our elected leaders. May we also share in our personal lives the same tasks and goals that we have entrusted to our leaders. Finally, as we are in the midst of the democratic process of electing our leaders, we pray that this election will maximize the participation of all of our citizens and allow the democratic process that is so much a part of this country to express the will of the people. May we be blessed, and may we all serve the common good. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Fryer. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice
Before we get started this morning, I would like to recognize a few folks that are here with us this morning. We have the Chair of the Outer Banks Business Bureau, Mr. Tim Cafferty. He's here with us this morning. Tim, thank you for being here. We have Chris Sawen, who is Executive Director of the Community Foundation, is here with us this morning as well. Also, we have with us Mr. Bill Coleman, who's Director of the SPCA. And with that said, you want me to recognize the sheriff?
Yeah.
Yeah, sheriff, sheriff's here. All right. Mr. Dowdy, as always, it's a pleasure to see you here. And with that being said, County Manager, I will turn the meeting back over to you.
Mr. Chairman, item one on the agenda is the Chairman's opening remarks, so I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you so much, County Manager. Most of you are aware that every meeting have Chairman's comments prior to the agenda. It's going to be rather lengthy this morning. I'm not going to apologize. I've got about nine items, and I'll save about eight of those under Commissioner's comments. But I have to address this issue with our community and our citizens of Dare County at this time. This one issue is probably the most pressing issue that we have facing us in all of Dare County right now, and that is essential housing. Let me just say that this board has never, and this Board of Commissioners will never, walk away from any difficult challenge it faces concerning our citizens of Dare County. I cannot think of a more pressing issue we face at this time. If you read our agenda, it's pleasant, it's plain as day. How will these decisions impact our children and families? Well, the decisions that we're trying to make with respects to housing certainly affects our families. Myself, along with my fellow board members, get approached daily by our citizens via phone, via emails, via text messages while we're out in public, going to the grocery store, et cetera. Every single day, every single one of us are approached by our citizens. The question is, when are we going to do something about the shortages of housing for our workforce? Well, our Board of Commissioners have been working on essential housing now for a number of years to see if we can make something happen in Dare County to address the shortages. We're close to making something happen with approximately 100 units total, building, being built on two separate sites by a company that we contracted with, Woda Cooper. We've also been working with coastal housing to do some additional sites throughout the county. Make no mistake, and I'll repeat, make no mistake, we're 100% committed to making this happen, and we will not give up until the first piling is laid or the first stud is put in a wall. Essential housing is a must for Dare County. Now, there's a micro conception in the public from a small group opposed to essential housing that it's going to be subsidized or Section 8 housing. Let me be very clear. This is just not the case. The county's proposed projects are for essential housing for our workforce, and once again, they are not rent subsidized or Section 8 housing. I repeat, they are not. We're proposing to build some units for our police officers. Those that sit in this room are sheriffs right here today, protecting us from anything that may happen. Our firefighters, who are on call 24/7 if anything were to happen to your home. Our EMS, once again, 24/7. Call 911, they're going to be there within six minutes or so to help you. Our teachers who teach your children. Our retail workers who sell you the clothes on your back. Our banking and mortgage folks who lend you money and help you with your finances. Our restaurant workers that work in our restaurants that serve you your food that you eat. Our hotel and motel workers, our property management workers that clean the facilities. Our construction trades and our fishing industry that puts food on your table. The National Low Income Housing Coalition gap report estimates that North Carolina has 347,275 extremely low-income renter households, but only 156,365 essential are available rental units. That represents a shortage of 182,643 affordable rental units for low-income families in North Carolina. Our stakeholders, who we have talked to, and the industry leaders in Dare County estimate that we need a minimum of 2,500 units. Let's explore these often asked questions. What problem does a lack of essential housing cause? Research shows that the shortage of essential housing costs in America economy about $2 trillion a year in lower wages and productivity. Without essential housing, families have constrained opportunities to increase their earnings and cars are causing slower GDP growth. How does essential housing affect the economy? The development of essential housing can boast local economies effectively through temporary construction, related employment jobs, and ongoing consumer purchases driven in jobs in the local economy. How does essential housing affect the community? Studies show that poor living conditions negatively affect physical and mental health. In fact, one study found that individuals in poor housing exhibit worse mental health in 100% of the cases. How does essential housing affect the quality of life? Essential housing alleviates overcrowding, makes more household resources available to pay for healthcare and health food, which leads to better outcomes, health outcomes. It also helps families build wealth, attend good schools, and live in communities that more conductive and long-term success. Why is essential housing important in Dare County? Essential housing buildings create several opportunities for economic growth while fostering stable, healthy, and happy population. When individuals are safely housed, they can shift their focus from merely surviving but thriving. Let me take a minute to address some common myths of essential housing. Property values will go down. How many times we've heard that, Commissioners? Repeated research shows essential housing has no negative impact on homes priced on the spread or frequency of sale of neighboring homes. According to the National Low Income Housing Coalition, 85% of essential housing needs exceed federally qualified standards, and over 40% of this household is considered excellent. That means essential housing is likely either on par with its surrounding neighborhoods or even better condition than its neighborhood. Another myth, essential housing looks cheap and undesirable. You see the screen up here? Does that look cheap and undesirable to you? Give me a break, folks. Builders of essential housing must comply, and I say must comply, with all the same restrictions in designs and construction standards as market rate projects. Furthermore, because of essential housing projects frequently rely on some public money, they have to comply with additional restrictions. Hear me out, folks, additional restrictions and higher standards than market rate housing. Essential housing hurts the quality of local schools and lowers the standards of test scores. Well, the opposite is actually true. Without essential housing, many families become trapped in a cycle of rising rents and have to move frequently to find living space that they can afford. That means their children are not able to stay in the same school for a very long time, resulting in lower test scores on standard tests. When a child has a stability home and can remain in a single school system, their test scores rise. It also means children are able to build long-term relationships with their peers, with their teachers, and members that are key to increasing performance in elementary and secondary schools. Finally, it increases the likelihood that children will be able to attend college. When housing disruptions are minimized, everybody wins. Essential housing is a burden on our taxpayers and our municipalities and our county. Essential housing actually enhances local tax revenues by improving, replacing substandard housing. Essential housing becomes a net plus on the tax rolls. Instead of low or no payment of taxes by distressed properties, essential multifamily housing actively contributes to the local economy and the taxes that are paid. Essential housing brings increased crime. Once again, folks, there are no, and I repeat, no studies that so show essential housing brings crime to neighborhoods. In fact, families who are a part of a multifamily community add stability to a neighborhood and lowers the crime rate. Multifamily communities increase neighborhood cohesion and encourages cooperation in reading their community of criminal activity. Families who live in essential housing seek the same thing every family member does, a safe place to raise their children. Traffic will increase. Oh, God, how many times have we heard that one? Like any new development, a higher density of housing proposal must meet the county's and the municipality's planning and engineering standards. There'll be a strain on public services and infrastructure. Generally, higher density housing needs less intensive infrastructure than new development. Why? Features like piping water, sewage services, schools, and roads, they already exist. Higher density developments can provide the larger customer base needed to increase the range and quality of available services. Essential housing won't fit in my neighborhood. Well, essential housing must comply with the same building restrictions and design standard as market rate housing, and will be designed to fit within the character of the neighborhood. Often, the future occupants of essential housing already live in the neighborhood. There are people sharing apartments or in a home with other family members. And just recently, I heard a young firefighter living in a garage. I mean, come on, folks. They're struggling to pay the market rent by giving up meals and having to walk because they can't afford the transportation fees. Folks, inclusive communities provide housing opportunities for all. Once again, look at the photo on the screen today of the potential housing. Does that look like something you don't want in your community? Final, final myth, essential housing only brings benefits to very low income. Everyone else pays. A lack of essential housing means tax revenues are not in place to improve roads, schools or air quality. It means businesses struggle to retain qualified workers and lower the amount of money available to spend in those businesses. Essential housing isn't about doing something just to help the low-income worker. It is also about improving business and raising the standards of the working and the middle-class families and the nation at large. Despite essential housing myths, the truth is that helping your fellow man helps the community as a whole. Let's don't talk about, let's talk about land use, not people. I have no problem saying this. NIMBY, the Human Rights Issue. NIMBY, as we all know, is an acronym for Not in My Backyard. It describes the phenomenon in which residents of a neighborhood designate a new development, such as essential, multifamily, housing, or change in the occupancy of an existing development as inappropriate or unwarranted for their local area. The opposition to essential housing is usually based on the assumed characteristics of the population that will be living in the development. Common arguments are that there will be increase in crime, which I just spoke about a moment ago, litter, theft, violence, and that property taxes will decrease. The benefit for the residents of the development are often ignored. When essential housing is being considered, there's most cases always some opposition. And I say some opposition because we're overwhelmed with the number of people coming to us and asking us to help with affordable housing.
Every day.
Every single day. The opposition, folks, is slim out there. When you compare the numbers. Like I said, some opposition. Some of it may, and I agree, may be legit, such as wanting a building, a high-rise apartment building on a street with only one single attached housing. Folks, this is not what the county is proposing. Discriminatory opposition to essential housing happens when people hold negative attitudes or stereotypes about the people who live in essential housing. This kind of opposition can be expressed in many ways, sometimes based on exaggerated concerns about changes to their neighborhood and impact on traffic and about the building form. NIMBYism often arises as a response to multifamily developments. As well, it can be seen from a single issue, those that are opposed to essential housing. Opposition to a simple essential housing project based on stereotypes or prejudice toward the people who live in them can be a violation of people's rights to be free from discrimination in housing. Folks, it means it can be against the law. In all due respect, the bottom line is that we do not have the right to choose who our neighbors are. In closing, I'm requesting that those of you out there watching today and will hear this, who oppose essential housing, that you will, and those that also who are on the fence, will please take the time to get the facts, study the type of housing proposed, know what the rent ranges are, and who can qualify. The county can help you with that. If you're not a neighborhood that is zone multifamily, if you're in a neighborhood that is zone multifamily and you don't want, then where? I ask you, where? I believe we, as human beings, have a responsibility and an obligation to make this happen once and for all for our citizens in need of housing in Dare County. I truly hope, I truly hope, those of you who are opposed to essential housing are not sending the message to the sheriffs that are sitting in this room today, who protect your lives and wear the uniform and put their life on the line every day, for the fireman in our community who does the same thing to protect your home, to the emergency management, folks, that are available 24/7 if you have a 911 emergency, or the educator in our community that teach your child, or to the restaurant worker who waits on you and serves you food, or to the hospitality industry employee that takes care of our hotels and our motels and our private property manager firms, or those tellers at the bank and the retail workers that wait on you, or the fishermen who put food on your table every single day, or the construction worker who builds your home. And the list goes on and on. Please tell me, tell me, tell this board that you're not sending a message to these individuals that I just listed, that you do not want them in your neighborhood and you do not want them as your next-door neighborhood, I mean neighbor. Once again, those of you in opposition, hear me loud and clear, this board is going to make it happen. But I want you to think long, I want you to think hard about the message that you're sending to those in need. Do the right thing and support essential housing in Dare County. Finally, our board is more than willing to take the time to hold a town hall meeting to address further concerns that you may have and try to set the record straight as to what we're trying to do to help our citizens in Dare County. Do the right thing, citizens. I don't usually do this at the end of Chairman's comments, but I'm going to open the floor to my fellow commissioners if they'd like to add any comments to my Chairman's comments this morning in reference to essential housing, and I'll yield to the Vice Chair.
Ditto.
Commissioner Bateman.
I'm with you.
Commissioner Couch.
Full speed ahead.
Commissioner Tobin.
I think you did a fine job, and I agree.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ross.
I've got a couple of things.
Yes, sir.
As you thought I, I expected I might. Three years ago in October 2019, before there was any COVID pandemic, County Manager Outen, Vice Chairman Overman, and I traveled to Raleigh and spent the day retaining the services of a nonprofit consultancy called Development Finance Initiative, associated with UNC School of Government. Three years ago today, that was the official kickoff, and I'm looking to my colleagues here to make sure I'm speaking correctly, of this effort by this board after listening to the pleas, the entreaties, the sheer desperation in people's voices to say, can we not do something? Guys, please. For three years, we have aligned partners, funding, and I'm going to summarize it this way. For those three years, we now have the plans. We have the development partners on side. We have secured the funding. It is final. And this board, as you just heard our Chairman say, has the will. And what we have received is a, hmm, no thanks, not in my backyard. Well, and you spoke at the very end, at the recent Nagshead Commissioners Meeting, I spoke, as did the Vice Chairman, the Chamber of Commerce, Woda Cooper, Board of Education. We had a number of speakers, basically expressing everything that you've just heard the Chairman express. These are our most essential neighbors. These are our friends. These are the people, as he described at length, that make our county work to provide attractive, safe, affordable housing in our neighborhood. I couldn't think of something that we could do that would be more beneficial to this county right now. I explained to the board, the Nagshead Board, that I saw this as an historic opportunity to partner between town and county to get this done. It's been in process for a long time. And to my great disappointment, they voted to place a 150-day moratorium on any activity in this particular tract of land, and then emphasized that it had in this particular tract of land, and then emphasized that it had nothing to do with essential housing. I'm sorry, guys. I'm sorry. So with that, you know where I'm at, you know how I feel, and this is something that we've simply got to get done. So thank you for those comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House.
Mr. Chairman, I echo your sentiments 100%. The only thing I would like to add is Outer Banks is a community, and this community strives and prides itself on helping their fellow neighbor. In times of emergency, in times of hurricanes, how many people from this county have rallied together to help someone out in their time of need?
Thank you.
We are now in a time of need, past time of need, to give to our community. It's our commitment to our people. And let's get some workforce, essential housing here. We need it. Our emergency services are in dire need of people, and we can't get them because we don't have housing. Open your hearts. This is essential. This is your community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. All right, that completes our chairman's comments. I do have one other additional item I'd like to address this morning. For nearly 50 years, this individual has faithfully demonstrated how volunteer service benefits its community. He's helped the people of the Outer Banks by generally sharing his time and talent with many grassroots organizations and advisory boards. He's a retired banker and has been a role model by inspiring generations of his neighbors to give back to others. For 49 years, I don't know why he chose 49, but he did, has honorably served on the Dare County ABC Board, and for many of those years has been its chairman. Under his leadership, the ABC Board has safeguarded the community by implementing the effective policies and procedures enforcing the North Carolina ABC rules and regulations. He's been an advocate for the sharing of ABC Board net profits with the county of Dare and its municipalities, to the tune of almost, right at a million dollars a year, folks, that's a lot of money. As chairman, he was passionate about the ways the ABC Board profits benefited Dare County's general fund with, once again, a portion of those proceeds proceeds, going to the county's Department of Social Services for help, to help fund much-needed services. He was also an early and insightful visionary who foresaw the economic and cultural opportunities that tourism could bring to the coastal community of the Outer Banks. Through his involvement with local organizations, including the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce, he has helped strategically guide the community during times of unprecedented tourism growth. In 1982, he worked with the author David Stick, actor Andy Griffin, and others to establish the Outer Banks Communities Foundation as a public charity to help meet local needs in Dare County and across the Outer Banks communities, from Corolla to Okeechobee. Throughout the years, he has continued to serve on the Board of Directors of this nonprofit group for decades and has enriched the community by providing some $12 million in grants and scholarships. Respected by all who know him, he's admired by, he's admired for his calm demeanor, his level-headed thinking, and his kind and giving spirit. Make him worthy of receiving this award I'm about to bestow upon him as I come down front. I'm sure you've all figured out who I'm speaking of, and that's Mr. Ray White. I didn't overlook these individuals, I just did it on purpose because I didn't want to give it away, but former chairman of the Dare County Board of Commissioners and Commissioner of Dare County, Stan Waiters, with us today, as well as Lee Nettles, with the Visitors Bureau Executive Director. I didn't overlook you guys, I just didn't want to give this away to Ray. But you see who's back here, showed up today, Ray. I had, I had the pleasure, I just retired recently after 30, well, after 50 years in the insurance business, but not quite this length of time with town insurance, a division of town bank, but I was there for about 12 years. In the last, just before Ray retired, I had the pleasure of sharing an office down the hallway from Ray. We did that for about a year, didn't we, Ray? A couple of years, I guess. And, and when they, when I said just a moment ago about calm demeanor and just a prince of a gentleman and a fantastic giver back to the community, it came from him, Ray. I missed you those last couple of years. He would come back and sit down and chit chat and want to know what's going on, but I cannot think of a more deserving human being than this man that stands before you today on behalf of this board, the governor of North Carolina. I want to issue you, State of North Carolina, from Governor Cooper, reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of Ray White. I dare, do hereby present the order of the Longleaf Pine to Ray White, with the rank of ambassador extraordinary privileges to enjoy fully and all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is the special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast, and that is, here's, here's to the land of the Longleaf Pine, to summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak are strong and the strong do grow. Here's the dale home, the old North State, state, excuse me, awarded by Roy Cooper, Longleaf Pine, Ray White. Linda, get the family up here. Come on up here, family, Linda. Enjoy this honor. Ray, you'll find this funny. We applied for this about three or four months ago, Dorothy and I really working hard on this, and we had some letters from some great people, Mr. R.B. Owens and Chris Owen and myself, and, and we really put some flattering words on that application. But every bit of it was the truth, Ray. But we finally got it approved, and they sent, they sent the award down here, and it's got it to Dorothy. Dorothy called me on the phone, she said, Bob, we can't present this. I said, why? Somebody in the course of getting ready to send us the certificate had spilt their coffee all over. So we would have done this two months ago if we'd have had a clean copy of it. So we had to go back, we had to send that one back and get a new one. But, Ray, I, this, this, you know, some of the things that we do as commissioners up here every single day and all that we face, man, this is the fun stuff, guys. It ain't, there's no contention, there's no animosity, there's no nothing dealing with issues in the county. This is talking about respecting and honoring our citizens who do good work for our county. And that's what this is all about, Ray. Could not be more well-deserved than anyone else other than you. Congratulations.
Great family.
Good thing I got a strong arm, folks. I can't believe you did it. I mean, no? I told Linda this probably three months ago, and I whispered to her, no, I'll tell you what it was, it was, we were at the wines festival, weren't we?
No.
Yeah, yeah, we was, we were at some, we were at ECU Pirate Rally, and I whispered into Linda's ear, I said, Linda, can you keep a secret? She said, yeah. I said, we're going to get the Longleaf Pine Award for Ray, and she, she was in tears. And I said, man, you gotta, you gotta clean up before you get hooked back up with Ray so he don't know something's going on. And she kept her, she kept it a secret. So we did good. It's a pleasure just to, to see how you guys and all you guys that are, I mean, it makes all the stuff that I, that I tried to do, it's there, you guys are sharp, you're keeping, you're keeping things going, and, and I mean, I'm just so, so taken by, you know, the, how much you, how, what you all are doing for us, and it makes all those fun times I had for 50 years, going to all these meetings and all this stuff, it made it worthwhile. Thanks again, guys, I'm really, really pleased.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Good job. Before the meeting today, I, I went down, I saw Ray in the audience, I said, what the devil are you doing here? He said, well, Chair Scarborough asked me to be here, you gonna do something? Scarborough looked at me, he said, couldn't you kept him at least one more year so he'd have at least 50 years? Thanks again, Ray. County manager?
Yes, sir. We do, the employee of the month could not be here today, so we'll try to do that presentation next month, and that moves us down to item three on the agenda. This is a resolution showing appreciation and support for Dare County election staff and precinct workers. I'll turn that back to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, county manager, let me scroll down here, if you don't mind, to, to item three, while we get some folks that exit the room here. Speaking of, of appreciation, we have county election staff and precinct workers and volunteers that help out with every single election that we have here in Dare County. And I just thought it was appropriate that we, we certainly honor those individuals who, who work our polls, that allow us to exercise our right to vote and to support that and, and to help us get through the process. And so we developed a resolution showing appreciation and support for Dare County election staff and precinct workers, and at this time, I'd like to present that resolution and ask the county manager if he will present it for our consideration.
This is a resolution showing appreciation and support for Dare County election staff and precinct workers. Whereas November 7th, 2022, has been declared Election Hero Day, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit program that was created by the Civic Responsibility Project in an effort to recognize the immense importance and work of election administration staff members and poll workers across the nation. And whereas the Dare County Board of Elections is governed by a five-member board appointed by the North Carolina State Board of Elections, it has the responsibility for safeguarding the will of the people, protecting democracy, and establishing fairness and equity for all in the process of self-governance. And whereas it is the mission of the Dare County Board of Elections to provide open, honest, and professionally managed election services to the community, and the Dare County Board of Elections ensures that these elections are free, fair, accurate, convenient, and accessible to all voters in Dare County. Whereas Dare County recognizes election workers as being all Dare County staff members, appointees, and support personnel who assist with an elections preparation, execution, and reporting process. And whereas there are approximately 100 precinct workers from throughout Dare County who work diligently to support local election staff at the county's three early voting locations, as well as all 16 precincts on Election Day, to help administer a smooth voting process for the citizens of Dare County. Now, therefore, being resolved, we, the Dare County Board of Commissioners, Dare County, North Carolina, do hereby express our sincere appreciation and support for the Dare County Board of Elections, Dare County Elections Department and staff members, poll workers, and precinct workers, by declaring today, November 7th, 2022, as Election Hero Day, this the 7th day of November 2022.
Thank you, county manager. I'd like to propose this resolution for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner House. Any further comments?
Just one comment I'd like to make. Tomorrow is Election Day, you go out and vote while you're in there voting, thank the poll workers that are there for their time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. All those in favor then of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes and? Motion carries unanimous. County manager?
So, Mr. Chairman, that leads us to item four on the agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning, I'll recognize you in a moment. If you've not signed up, raise your hand, and when you do, I'll recognize you. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light up on the podium that'll come on when your time begins, there's a yellow light on the podium that will come on when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, please conclude your remarks. First on the list, I have David Bragg.
Welcome, Mr. Bragg.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Unfortunately, I find that I have to say this, that the Obama-Biden administration and the Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD was to set new regulations that would set aside taxpayer money to build low-income housing for poor people in rich areas. Under the rules of federal government, would be able to overrule zoning laws of more than 1,200 local government and force communities to comply. But the House moved in to preemptively limit the power of HUD, thank goodness, I'm glad they took this action. But now I'm looking closely at this board, because what you're trying to do at Naggshead is preempt our board from deciding whether or not to build low-income housing in that area. One. Number two, Mr. Woodard said that he didn't hear much opposition at the board meeting he went to. Well, primarily, that was because I've been very engaged in this, in particular with the Manio area and the Board of Education. The reason no one engaged is because no one knew where it was going to be. Yes, it is. You don't have to comment. So with that being said, I make, I'm making sure people know, and what's happening is people are not happy. That area does not need to be developed. As a matter of fact, you ask where, if not there, have the perfect solution for you. you ask where, if not there, have the perfect solution for you. Manio has a piece of property, 803 Bernice Ave., $283,000, 5.7 acres, versus the $3.5 million, 4.3 acres in Nagshead. I just saved the county $3.2 million and I didn't do, even have to do anything. You take that along with the, what I believe the Board of Education is illegally running, I don't know if you all are aware of this, but I know Mr. Ross is, he's been at a couple of board meetings I've spoke at. They are illegally running, based on state statute 6658, those trailers in Manio. That property was supposed to be sold to develop low-income housing. It hasn't. They're still collecting rent, which is against the law as I perceive it, perceive it. And when the new Board of Education comes in, I'll speak to them again. And hopefully, they'll take care of the matter. But there are other areas to develop it, not in the historic district of Nagshead, and not a 3.5 million piece of property. You got other options. Secondly, I used to work and live in, I worked in DC, I lived in New Orleans and in the Miami area. Low-income people have to take certain actions. I moved there. I knew I couldn't afford to move there. I got a second job. I got a third job until I could make enough money with my primary job to afford housing. That happens. It needs to happen. You learn responsibility that way. So we've got that option. When I worked in DC, many of the people that came into DC lived way outside the areas. They had two-hour commutes each way every day from Pennsylvania, West Virginia, and Southern Virginia. So why can't people drive? Why don't you guys set up a park-and-ride? So people in the outlying areas go to a certain area, they're picked up by a bus, and they're brought into the area to work. Why don't you set up some public transportation where you could have people picked up by bus or ha, hey, what about Light Rail? Yeah, I mean, you guys would love to do some Light Rail, get a lot of funding from Cooper, and get some Light Rail coming into this area. Another reason I go to the Board of Education meetings is because I saw Mr. Twitty come in and say, we got one person, one teacher, that would not come here because they couldn't afford to come here. Why don't you look at the 17 teachers that left? If we have retention, then we won't have recruitment. Of the 17 teachers, not one, not one mentioned affordable housing. Low pay and the administration being the Board of Education and the superintendent. Now, the sheriff back there, I would love to have some of your sheriffs live in my area. No doubt about it. Love police, love firemen, EMS, everybody else. But they will not be able to live in this housing. They make too much. Oh, yeah, we got that, we talked about that at the last meeting. That's the case. And you need to, when you Google something, go past the first page, because Google is very liberal. And they're gonna give you all the answers they want you to have. Go to page four or five, and you'll find about depreciation of housing and crime. Thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Next, I have Trish Midget.
Trish, welcome this morning.
Thank you so much for your time. So I'm Trish Midget, and I'm a longtime Realtor at, with Midget Realty in the Rodanthe area. I'm here before you today to express how saddened I am to see what's happening in Rodanthe. Desperate homeowners are reaching out to me routinely. We have been told in the past that Rodanthe was not eligible for nourishment because the Park Service would not allow it. It was brought to my attention when I attended the public meeting at the Rodanthe Waves Salvo Civic Center on August 24th, hosted by the Park Service. The county has never proposed beach nourishment, and the Park Service has no opposition to it. I would like to know how we could start a task force with the county to work towards obtaining beach nourishment and other, more immediate solutions for the homes in danger now. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish.
John Head.
Mr. Head, welcome this morning.
Welcome. Thank you, Commissioners and staff. First, a little accolade to the Dare County Administration Staff and Planning and Building Department. We own property in Rodanthe. They were instrumental in helping us get the permits in place in advance of the May storm that, you know, would have probably taken us out with a debris field from the two homes that collapsed. So I just wanna give a little accolade to them, because they issued us a move permit without a permit. So we were able to get it off of Thursday before that happened. And that was instrumental in saving that house and the development they were working on there in, off of Seabreeze Drive. But through the light of this and being a property owner on Hatteras Island in many years, and being involved with Hatteras Island Business Association and the, and the beach nourishment that took place back with the help of McCrory and his Department of Transportation Chair, and the help of Bill Cook and his administrator, they brought them here into this room at that time and got Rodanthe, the S-curve is protected for a time. It's time again to readdress that. And so I come alongside Tricia there today as we work towards helping to find some solutions long-term for protecting private property rights and obviously the beaches that bring our tourists to Dare County. But over the last few weeks and months, there's been an obvious overreach of our federal government in the Park Service. And that is, they're now claiming that they have jurisdiction of the foreshore. They own it. And they're claiming well beyond the mean high tide, which is described in the statute, was codified in 1978 with the North Carolina Assembly. And they're making people get permits to move their houses. They're telling you, can't do that here. There's a meets and bounds rule in North Carolina where I owned property to that point. In 1954, the Park Service purchased property along, which created the Park Service, which we're thankful for, Cape Hatteras National Seashore. But that property ended at that meet and bounds point. They're still visible today. If it, you know, roads into the ocean, the state of North Carolina then claims that land between the mean high tide line and out three nautical miles, which is their jurisdiction. That is also from a North Carolina School of Law study that I'm reading front and quoting those statute purposes. And I understand, and speaking with Bobby about eight weeks ago, that it's nice because the Park Service comes in helping clean up the mess. But we've always been kinda cleaning up our mess after hurricanes. And we can set up a plan to do that when a house falls and then hopefully get some, you know, reimbursement from some of those property owners to offset those costs. But I have a grave concern with the vote, videos, if you haven't seen them, they will be made public, of armed national, armed federal agents showing up on private property, inquiring tenants, harassing tenants about whether they're use of, inspecting and crawling over a septic tank, which I don't think they're quite qualified for, and opening it and looking into it and saying that they can't be using the restroom in that facility, pressuring the county officials not to reissue permits for those houses. This is an overstretch of big government. The Department of Interior is good at this. They have a good face and a polite man running it. But at the same time, it's tyranny when you're the property owner and you're willing, you've got four armed federal agents on your front porch. Scary. So I think we need to just crack the curtain open a little bit, shine some light on this. It's not anything here that the Commission can do, as I know, but we will be working towards this end over the next few weeks and months and hopefully have it resolved within a year. And so I thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Head.
Is there anyone else like to speak at public comment? Anyone else here for public comment? Any public comment in Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we close the public comment. And that takes us to item five on the agenda. This is a public hearing for a zoning text amendment to the R2B zone to allow for a pet crematorium as an accessory use for pet grooming and kennel facilities. Again, this is a public hearing with that zoning change. The same rules apply. Is there anyone here that would like to speak at that public hearing? I see no one here. Is there anyone in Buxton would like to speak at that public hearing?
No comment from Buxton.
All right, with that, Noah, if you could come and present to the board, please.
Good morning, Noah.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Good morning. Ms. Pam Anderson has submitted a zoning text amendment request to amend the R2B zoning district. Ms. Anderson is seeking the addition of pet crematoriums to a list of uses offered in the areas zoned R2B. The R2B district applies to portions of Collington and is intending to encourage the development of moderate-density residential neighborhoods to serve as a transition zone between low-density areas and more intensely-developed areas, and provide a setting for a limited number of businesses, business uses associated within a coastal village location. Any text amendment to the R2B district would apply to all land zoned R2B. The R2B is primarily a residential zoning district that offers some business slash commercial uses, including real estate offices, resident businesses, childcare centers, pet grooming and kennel facilities. There's a copy of the R2B regulations provided in the packet. The applicant currently operates a pet grooming and kennel facility located at 208 Williams Drive in Collington. The 2009 Dare County Land Use Plan includes two policies under commercial development heading that are pertinent to this proposed text amendment. A copy of this information is also attached with this memorandum. Land Use Combatability Number Five encourages the continued existence of locally-owned businesses in unincorporated Dare County. Land Use Combatability Number Six addresses the scope of commercial development and uses the gross floor area limitations to manage the size of commercial development. This proposed text amendment does not seem incompatible with the policies listed. The Dare County Planning Board reviewed the text amendment at their September 12th, 2022 meeting. At the Planning Board meeting, planning staff presented the proposed amendment as a standalone use or as an accessory use to pet grooming and kennel facilities. The Planning Board agreed that the proposed amendment should be an accessory use to pet grooming and kennel facilities. Planning staff also indicated to the Planning Board that in doing research on pet crematoriums, the state of North Carolina does not regulate or enforce any regulations on pet crematoriums. However, certain incinerators may be required to obtain a North Carolina air quality control permit. During this discussion, a number of conditions to the proposed amendment were identified, including setbacks in residential dwellings, the need for the incinerator to be contained inside a building, and the need for the operator to obtain certification through an industry accreditation program. A condition was also added that would require the operator to submit such permits or approvals from the state should the state start to regulate pet crematoriums. At the close of the discussion, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend favorable action on the amendment and associated conditions. The Planning Board found that the proposed text amendment is consistent with the policies of the 2009 Dare County Land Use Plan, specifically Land Use Combatability Five and Six. The recommended proposed text amendment and the Land Use Plan policies of LUC Five and Six are attached to this memo for the board's review. Any favorable action by the Board of Commissioners should also include a finding of consistency and reasonableness. This statement is also included with my comments and a copy of the draft conditions for the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Noah. Any comments, Noah? Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobin to approve as presented and approved by the Planning Board. Is there a second?
Second, but you need to read the whole motion to adopt.
Absolutely. There's a second by the Vice Chairman. If you will do that, Commissioner Tobin, the full motion?
I don't have it available.
You don't have it available? Okay, I'll.
No, it's, it's, he's pulling up, I'm going down.
There it is, Jim. Just right there. It's right here.
Rob, why don't you read?
I'll, I'll.
I moved it, the draft amendment to the R2B zoning district, section 22-22 dot two. How many twos do we have here?
Two twos.
Of the Dare County zoning ordinance to be adopted as drafted, a statement of consistency and reasonableness, as prepared by staff, is adopted as part of this motion.
Okay, the second agree to that as well? Second agrees to that as well? Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those who like say aye? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
But, um, let me just say, I've visited the site, and the applicant is complying with everything that's been asked of her. The neighbors across the street are fully in agreement with this, that you're gonna put up a, a building to house the crematory. So all the things that's been requested of her has, she's accepted. And also, they're on about five acres of land with woods on each side of them. So she's also gonna help out the SPCA with their animals in need, the public. They pick, they'll pick your animal up, bring it, take it back to you. I mean, it's really a, a nice arrangement. So I'm, I was pleased to support that. Not only that, here we go, folks. Central housing. She rents out to a chef. $900 bucks a month. Thank you, Pat, for being a part of the solution. Absolutely. County Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item six on the agenda. Now, this is an update on the feral cats, and Bill Coleman from the SPCA is here to make that presentation.
Welcome, Bill.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning, Bill.
As you know, we started this program, I came here and talked, talked to y'all to do it. And so I'll give you an update as of, really, the end of October. We've already altered 135 cats, which I feel good about. We started the first of September, so we're, we're moving maybe a little slower than I hoped, but it's consistently happening. So far, we spent out of, let's see, the Dare County has a $60,000 budget. We spent about $6,500, which is 135 times 50, or 130 times 50, something like that. And then the SPCA has also spent just about $6,000. So we've spent about 14% of our budget. And it's my intent just to keep it going until we run out of money. Just to let you know, we have some partners in this, and maybe you remember that. We have Feline Hope and Friends of Felines in Hatteras Islands, Bay and Neuter Today, Feline Fix Foundation, and Coastal Humane Society, who has bought vaccines, which some of the cat, the cat folks want. We're at a minimum doing a rabies vaccination. Here's where we picked up cats, real quickly. Eastlake, Mann's Harbor, White's Market, if you've been there, we've gotten 11 out of there so far, and there's probably another 20. Wanchees in Recycling Center, Junkyard, Mills Landing Road, Manio, and Pirates Cove, and Harbortown, Hatteras, really, in every town we've been down there. And there's a lot more to, a lot more work to do down that way. Kitty Hawk, The Woods Road, Kitty Hawk Road, Poor Ridge, Schoolhouse Road, Parker Street, these are some of the places we've gotten cats. A few places in Nagshead, Kill Devil Hills, Collington, Avalon Road, Harris Teeter, behind Harris Teeter. We have a little bit of a challenge in, in Kill Devil Hills. As you probably know, they're, they have their own animal control officers. We really encountered this last week where they brought us a cat in who had been ear tipped, which means it had, had been done through our program. And unfortunately, when they bring a cat in to us, we can't return it to them. If you look at their ordinances, they say, oh, a cat, a cat gets picked up, and then they don't return it. So.
Okay, let, let's hit the pause button here, guys. This is kind of a issue. We have already neutered this feral cat as part of our program.
That's correct.
Someone within the Kill Devil Hills Animal Control Group brings an already-neutered feral cat to the shelter.
Correct.
What did they think was going to happen by bringing it to the shelter? A feral cat?
Well, they know that when we get them from Kill Devil Hills, we have no choice.
Does anyone stop them at the door and say, Mr. or Ms. Kill Devil Hills, what is your expectation in bringing a feral cat to the shelter?
They are aware of the consequences of that.
See, I don't understand. They know they're bringing a cat to be euthanized. Why are they doing this? I'm not sure. And it creates a conflict a bit for you guys.
Oh, it's a lot of it. You know, it's, it's a major, they, they haven't, this is the first one, but they told us, oh, well, there's 30 more cats at this location. And I've told them, don't bring them to us. But unfortunately, what's, the difficult part for us as well is that they are the judge and jury, but we're the executioner. And so honestly, I need those folks in Kill Devil Hills to be able to euthanize if that's what they're going to do.
Okay, we, I, I'm gonna ask you and I, perhaps County Manager, perhaps Sheriff Doughty, Mr. Chairman, and we look into this and talk to our partners in Kill Devil Hills. But thank you for explaining it, Bill. And, and this is a follow-up item for us.
Well, in the meantime, we are not doing any cats in Kill Devil Hills. We have stopped doing the program there because it's a waste of your all's money, it's a waste of our time, it's not what we want to be doing.
Can I ask a question here? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, is that all right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, when a, once the cat's been neutered, what's the expectation afterward? Is it the Friends of Felines? Who becomes the caretakers?
Well, so, yeah, it depends, obviously, where the cat is picked up. Well, so, yeah, it depends obviously where the cat is picked up, and that's where it's going back. Like in Kill Devil Hills, apparently, the, there was an older gentleman who did that, and we were catching him there, and his neighbors said, pressured him not to, to take them back. But either Friends of Felines and Hatteras Island, they're gonna know, they're gonna be the caretaker, or perhaps there already is a caretaker. We've gotten numerous calls to say, I've got seven cats in my yard, and I'm happy to feed them and keep them, but I need to get them spayed and neutered. So, you know, they would be somebody who would, who would maintain it.
Yes, sir, that was specific to Kill Devil Hills because you're right. They, they are very organized on seven villages on Hatteras Island, so they've taken care of their, their, and I was just curious as to...
Well, you know, and, and I gotta think, even though we've only done 135 at this point, because I'd like to do 1,000, that we're gonna see less kittens at the shelter next year.
Are there other hurdles other than this? I mean, these are good, good numbers, but are there other hurdles that you're running into?
Not at this point. I mean, these nonprofit groups are the ones that are doing primarily all the labor, and I haven't been able just to hire anybody to do it for me, but I certainly have that in the budget to try to hire some people if we can find some other folks who are willing to help.
Yeah, we've mobilized, frankly, community volunteers all up and down the county that are doing this, Danny. We've got a small oversight kind of steering committee for Operation Homeless Cats. Bill is our overall director of operations. Lori Amitucci, the chair of the SPCA, myself, and our lead veterinarian. The four of us are sort of a steering committee, and I promised these guys that my role, if we encountered these sort of obstacles, I would bring them back to the board and we would do what we could to resolve. But basically, we're moving forward pretty, pretty well here.
Yeah, we'll continue to move forward.
I stay in touch.
And I'll come back and give you another update whenever you'd like.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
They came out and they got one of my cats.
Yeah, remember you telling them last week?
And, and he's working. I saw him with a rodent last week, so he's doing his job.
Good.
Yep.
Brought him back in, about two days, he brought him back in there.
Yeah, and we're not gonna have kittens in the spring.
Yeah, I guess he's happy as he can possibly be.
Yeah, good. County manager?
Chairman, that brings us to item seven on the agenda. This is the 2022 OBX Jeep Invasion, and Steve House makes a presentation for that.
There we go.
County manager, I'm, gentlemen, I'm gonna head down to the podium for this.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So, this is the chairman used to do this quite often, I don't. This year was trying for the Outer Banks Jeep Invasion. And I've got some of my counterparts here, if y'all would please come up. We planned this last year for our inaugural event. Absolutely amazing. For our inaugural event, we had 450 Jeeps registered and showed up. This year was trying, trying. The 501(c)(3) nonprofit that we were working with backed out of the process. So, we had to do something on our own. And us as Jeepers, looking at it as being on a Jeep trail, we're in our Jeep, there's a rock in front of us, what do we do? We put it in four-wheel drive and we go over that, that obstacle. So, what we did was, we started our own 501(c)(3) for Outer Banks Jeep Invasion, for Outer Banks Jeep Charities Group. And this year... Is it not working? Hey, you got me hooked up? There it goes. This year, 796 Jeeps invaded the Outer Banks on October 7th through the 9th.
How many?
2022.
That's incredible.
Seven, 700 and how many?
Ninety-six.
796.
They were overwhelmed when they were specing 500.
Whoa.
We all gathered at the event site in Nag's Head, along with 38 vendors, with the support of 45 sponsors. The... Good gosh, now my pages are sticking together. There we go. Multiple sponsors from out, from out the Outer Banks helped us out, a lot of businesses donated. And also during the event, we also had a visit from Dare Med Flight. Joined in with festivities was a tremendous hit with also the kids and the participants, and many of which were emergency services personnel. Festivities included live music from The Ramble and Johnny Waters' van, a array of raffles, prizes that were given away, most of them were Jeep-related, and outside a show and shine competition, a poker run, which put these Jeeps all over the Outer Banks and visiting many of our businesses along the way. And also, we had a vendor bingo, which was a bingo card given out that our participants could go around to the different vendors and see if they could get a bingo. And also, a Jeep crawl on the beach. This was a very special event. Special thanks to the town of Kitty Hawk. As you know, the town of Kitty Hawk does not allow public driving on their beach. They open the beaches for a charity ride, and they limit it to 100 Jeeps. Registration was sold out in 10 minutes. And the only thing we left on the beach were the tire tracks that you see in the bottom. On Sunday, we did a lighthouse-to-lighthouse run. I can't thank Marie Paul enough for getting this done. 207 Jeeps participated, donating toys and over $500 to the Virginia Tillet Center for Underprivileged Kids for Dare County for Christmas. This event would not be possible without the help of some very talented and dedicated people. Outer Banks Jeep Charities Group. Let me introduce, introduce you. Kerry Coulson, our treasurer. Kim Jones, our secretary. Jared Wibley, junior vice president. Rich Paul, senior vice president, and myself as president. Our executive committee for the Outer Banks Jeep Invasion Board. Marie Paul, Pam Wibley, Laura Swisher, Nicholas Seltzer, Chris Rock, Sean Rock, Jay Mascar, Laura Seal Lewis, Michael Woodard, Melinda Woodard, Daniel Taylor, and Michael Taylor. I can't thank these people enough for the dedication and volunteers they did. And also, the volunteer, the Cat Five Jeepers. Their countless hours put into this, and their manpower to make it all happen was phenomenal. Also, want to thank all of our sponsors that took time to either donate monetarily or to give us their works to help us make this event possible. It was a trying time to get this one accomplished, as you know, with, as I spoke, spoke about earlier. The Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, we can't thank them enough. Tim, Lee, thank you so much for standing by us. The town of Nag's Head for the permitting purposes for, for the event, and also the town of Kitty Hawk for allowing them, for allowing us to ride on their beaches, and also for the town, for the Dare County for helping with various different stages of this process as well. The Outer Banks Jeep Invasion, one of the main thing, one of the things we did was, and one of the main charities for the Cat Five Jeepers is the Beach Food Pantry. We asked our Jeepers that came and when they went out for their poker run and stuff to bring back non-perishable items, and they would get a different raffle, raffle ticket for some different prices. They came out in spades. 2,500 pounds of non-perishable food was donated to the Beach Food Pantry. The Outer Banks Jeep Charities Group had two charities we wanted to give to. Two of the main charities, a junior charity and a senior charity. Wounded Warriors in Action. It's seen fitting for a Jeep to give to veterans. The Jeep is also the only inanimate object that has ever received the Purple Heart. And that Jeep sits in the Marine Corps Museum. Old Faithful is her name. She has combat wounded, unrestored, and they fire her engines up every week, and she'll still, still run. Her Purple Heart is for not only her Jeep, but also sacrifices that Jeep made, all the Jeeps made that were either destroyed or received damage in combat during World War II. So, with that, the Wounded Warriors in Action Foundation. Brooke, if you can come up. Brooke Sparks is our local representative for the Wounded Warriors in Action. And it serves our nation's combat wounded Purple Heart recipients by providing world-class outdoor sporting activities as a means to recognize and honor their sacrifice, encourage independence and connections with communities, and promote healing and wellness through camaraderie and a shared passion for the outdoors. Once a year or twice a year? Once a year. They come down here to the Outer Banks, they spend a week, duck hunting, fishing, whatever we, we can do for them. And at the end of that week, when they go, the road is lined going up to Virginia with all of the residents here on the Outer Banks and Currituck, flags waving, big signs that say thank you for their sacrifice and their commitment. We escort them, not only with the, with the motorcycle groups, but also our Jeep groups. And it's a very moving tribute to let them know, thank you, not only for their service, but for their personal sacrifice. Rich?
On behalf of the Outer Banks Jeep Invasion, Brooke, we want to issue you a check for the Wounded Warriors in Action, $6,000.
Thank you. Thank you, Brooke. We hope you will like it.
I'm stunned. This event has been going on for many years. It's evolved quite a bit. I've never been in a Jeep, and I never rode on a motorcycle until I started with this event. And those two groups of people are so powerful. And it wasn't, this year I had COVID when, the day that they arrived, our heroes arrived, we refer to them as our heroes. They're all Purple Heart recipients. And I was in a panic, and these folks stepped up. I had never met any of them face to face, and they stepped up and they said, we'll deliver food. We got it. We're good. And our heroes never missed a meal, and they never missed the experience that years had happened in the past because these folks stood up and said, don't worry about it. It needs to go to Manio, we can get it from Manio to Currituck. It's no problem. And I just couldn't believe the selflessness that they showed, and it made me feel wonderful that a charity and a group of people that I hold so dear to my heart, I'm not the only one. There's lots of other people that want these heroes to know that they are loved and appreciated, and we don't take their sacrifice for granted. This crew shows up like nobody ever. And they put their money where their mouth was, and they made the event bigger and badder than it's ever been. And to see the Purple Heart recipients crying on the way out means we did our job. You know, they know that we appreciate their sacrifice, and this event isn't gonna stop. We're gonna make it better, and we owe so much of that to the Jeep folks, and I can't thank them enough.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our main charity we decided to give to is a group of special people. Jackie and Dorothy, are you here? Jackie Fraper, Dorothea Patton. Dorothy, you're an outstanding athlete, and I want to thank you for everything that you do. Jackie, thank you for stepping up, as she is now the co-ordinator of the Dare County Special Olympics.
Excellent.
The mission of the Special Olympics is to provide year-round sports training and athletic competition in a variety of Olympic-style sports for children and adults with intellectual disabilities, giving them continued opportunities to develop physical fitness, demonstrate courage, experience joy and participation in a shared, share of gifts, skills, and friendship in their families, other Special Olympic athletes, and their community. I believe this year, we've had quite a few athletes throughout the county compete, and not only here locally, but also have gone off to state games in Raleigh. And I believe we were all part of that send-off.
Yes, we were, Commissioner.
And a very moving experience. And we know that takes a commitment, not only from the Special Olympics, but also you as an athlete. And I want to thank you so much. On behalf of Dare County or the Outer Banks Jeep Invasion, we would like, we would like to present you a check to help with the Special Olympics and to help you compete for $35,000. Thank you so much.
Steve, if I had a cocktail...
Would you like to have?
If I had a cocktail, it would be Jeeps and the people that own them.
We are just absolutely blown away. Thank you all so much. On behalf of Dare County, our Special Olympics, thank you so very much for your contribution, your donation. We are beyond grateful for this. One thing that is really important to our athletes is ensuring that no cost is ever passed on to a single athlete of ours. So, this is going to help immensely with that. We have several sports, and our program is growing. We are currently getting ready to add golf, and we're gonna add tennis as well. So, this is gonna help this program get off the ground and running. This helps with our travel expenses, it helps with equipment, uniforms, it helps supply everything that we need for all of our competitions and invitationals, and truly help these guys really get to, get out there and compete. They love to compete. That is something that's so incredibly important to them, that you really get to shine and be them, their true selves, getting out there and competing, and they have the highest level of sportsmanship out of anyone I think I have ever seen. So, we are truly honored. I don't even think we can say thank you enough for this. So, thank you very much.
Definitely a special group of people. And onward and upward... And onward and upward, May 12th and 14th, 2023, we're going to invade the beach again. And I hope to see y'all come out and visit us. And Commissioner Couch, I know with the First Flight Society, y'all raffling off a massive Jeep that had an awesome engine in it.
Thank you for your help.
And I appreciate you bringing it out there. And I hope it was a success for the First Flight Society. Come on out and join us. And thank you all so much. Marie, just remind me, I kept checking it, but couldn't do it on the way. As you know, the best of the beach results are in the, for the annual annual event, Outer Banks Jeep Invasion.
All right.
Thank you all. Thank the community for supporting us.
Steve, you call that invasion? I thought it looked like me. You stormed the beach. Really good stuff. Congratulations. That's quite an accomplishment. County Manager?
Yes, Sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item eight on the agenda. This is a Dare County Tourism Board request for consent for expenditures from the Restrictive Fund Line, Item 4999, for various tourism board grants. And Lee Mettles and Tim Cafferty are here for that.
Welcome this morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, sir. You were talking earlier. First of all, I have to say, I've known Ray White for 40 years. I've never seen him speechless. Congratulations. And you talked about that being the good stuff. We hope this is pretty good stuff. We're getting ready to talk to you about the tourism grant. I also want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for appearing at our OBX Tourism Summit last Thursday. We had nearly 150 people there for a day of education, the tourism industry. And it was well-received. And I think the big takeaway is watch out where you keep your phone because we're tracking you and we know exactly what you're doing when you're here. But just to set up, Lee, he's going to do the heavy lifting. But the Tourism Impact Grant Program was established to assist Dare County governmental units and other nonprofit organizations with programs and services needed due to the impact of tourism. And we ask your approvals for some expenditures today as a must.
Lee?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have, we have eight projects that have, that we're very proud to bring to you today. These include five pathway and walkway projects, including the final section of pathway in Hatteras Villages connecting Frisco and Buxton. And also the sidewalk in front of Wright Brothers, which will connect KDH from the northern line to the southern line. So great project. We have one park restroom that'll make that accessible and permanent. We have handicap accessible beach crossover. And then the restoration of an important cultural and community landmark, the Flag Signal Tower in Hatteras Village at the Hatteras Island Weather Bureau Station, which is a National Register Historic Place. Collectively, these, these eight projects total $908,595 for this one wave. The Tourism Impact Grants are once annual. So we're, we're very proud, the Tourism Board is very proud to bring these projects to you. Happy to answer any questions you may have. We, we consider this part of using the power and the influence of tourism for good. Commissioner House, you just shared another way that the event grants and our work with events can also contribute to the good of the community, partnering with nonprofits, partnering with organizations such as yours to do the good within the community. So the Tourism Impact Grants, we believe, are another step in that using tourism for good.
Thank you, Lee. And I appreciate your comments. And Tim, thank you for being here. I will ask the, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to approve. It's been seconded by Commissioner House as well as Commissioner Bateman. Any further conversation, discussion?
It's Chairman Dan.
Yes.
Congratulations, guys. You're doing the work that the, these tag grants were exactly proposed for. This is a solid mix of affirming our history and heritage, but also providing recreational opportunities. Everybody wins.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Then those in favor of the motion, didn't signify by saying aye? Aye. Those like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Lee, I got to say, that number just keeps increasing. I know a year or two ago, we talked about probably 10 million bucks, but I bet it's much higher than that now.
I ran a pretty quick total this morning. And we're over 17 million
Unreal.
Through the restricted fund grants. And we're putting in another 300,000 plus on the general fund side for event support. So we're several million.
Fantastic. Fantastic. That's, that's major projects over the years. That's a lot of bucks. Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item nine on the agenda. This is a grant application for the Stumpy Point dredge material disposal site modifications. And Barton Grober is here for that presentation.
Good morning, Barton, and welcome.
Good morning. So the IJAB bill provided millions of dollars for Dare County dredging activities. But Dare County is responsible for all, providing all the disposal facilities. One of those is Stumpy Point. I did want to clarify that they will not be dredging the basin, what they call Range Three and Four and portion of Range Two due to heavy metals or their belief that there are heavy metals. I think they need some tests. So this would be essentially from the emergency ferry channel out into the sound. Estimated cost to improve that berm is 835,000. We'd be responsible.
Barton, how much? I'm just curious. I'm not challenging this at all. How much elevation is necessary? It says to be elevated. I was just curious how much it?
So Island H, we're doing about three feet. This is a larger disposal facility. I would estimate it would be about three to four or five feet. I mean, the consultant has to get out there and get some eyes on it.
Yeah, I was just curious.
These are numbers to kind of get us going. But it is a pretty large facility. And yeah, like I said, this would just be for the emergency ferry channel and out into the sound. We'd be responsible for 25% of the costs. So I did also put in what kind of fund balance we have. We have 932,000 right now. We are going to eventually need, as Jim knows, a disposal site for Wonchi. So, and that will be a very probably large expense in the millions of dollars. So just so you all are aware where we are with the budget, that'll probably be four years down the road or somewhere in that range. But yeah, I would need you all to authorize submission of the DEQ shallow draft application and also adopt a resolution.
All right. Thank you, Barton. County Manager, would you read that resolution, please?
Whereas Dare County desires to sponsor the Stumpy Point Confined Disposal Facility Modification Project to provide additional capacity for dredge materials in preparation for the upcoming US Army Corps of Engineers Pipeline Dredging Project. Therefore, be it resolved, Dare County requests the State of North Carolina to provide financial assistance to Dare County for the Stumpy Point Confined Disposal Facility Modification Project in the amount of 626,250 dollars or 75% of the project cost, whichever is the lesser amount. Dare County assumes full obligation for payment of the balance of the project cost. Dare County will obtain all necessary state and federal permits. Dare County will comply with all applicable laws governing the ward of contracts and the expenditure of public funds by local governments. Dare County will supervise construction of the project to assure compliance with permit conditions and to assure safe and proper construction according to approved plans and specifications. Dare County will obtain appropriate easements right of way or suitable dredge material disposal areas that may be necessary for the construction and operation of the project without cost or obligation to the state. Dare County will ensure that the project is open for public use by the public on an equal basis with limited restrictions, if any, on public property. Dare County will hold the state harmless from any damages that may result from the construction, operation, and maintenance of the project. And Dare County accepts the responsibility for the operation and maintenance of the completed project. This is the seventh day of November, 2022.
Thank you, County Manager. Is there any questions with respects to the application and the resolution?
Barton, I have a question. There's a map on here showing Stumpy Point.
Yes.
Is the disposal area shown on that?
On the first page, if I'm looking at this one, it's on the first page. You should have it on yours. It's just south of, of it. If this is where, you know, Stumpy Point, it's right there on the south. It should be on one of your agenda packet pages.
Yeah, there's only one photograph like that on here.
Okay.
And it's got a yellow line coming out of it. It's that particular one.
Yeah, I didn't know what that was either.
Yeah, that's, that's the, the yellow line is the channel. It goes out. If you look to the south of where the yellow line kind of forks, if you look to the south, you'll see a rectangular area that's kind of a lighter brown.
Okay, I see.
That's, that's the disposal facility.
Got you. See that rectangle?
Originally, the Corps had said they were good on capacity, but they alerted us earlier this year that it needed to be.
You're talking rectangular area right here.
I think they have about 35,000 cubic yards capacity and they need about 200,000 cubic yards of capacity.
So how high will you build it up, you think?
Yeah, we're going to need to build it up probably like three or four feet. I would assume. It's a, we don't get money for this Stumpy Point nearly as often. So typically it's about every 20 years. Whereas Wonchi's, like I said, it's more of a every three to five year project. This should provide capacity for 15 or 20 years until the next project. And then again, we'll have to figure out down the road, do we build up the berm even higher or do we find another disposal site?
Got you. Thank you.
Barton, for clarification, to the left, to the right of that line, there's a, there's a triangle. But inside of that line, there's a triangle as well. What, is it to the right side of that channel or the left side?
I think left side if I'm, if we're looking at the same page, I believe. Not sure which one are you, I'm not sure if you are looking at this one or this one.
In your right hand.
So you're looking at the yellow line?
We're looking at a diagonal yellow line and I don't know what that is.
Oh, that is the channel.
Okay, but there's a disposal site.
And then where it kind of, yeah, and the disposal site is farther to the south.
Okay. I don't know what the orientation is. Am I looking due north on the top of the page?
I'm not sure. I could probably walk up.
Yeah.
Just look at the photo you've got in your hand.
This is the landscape, so it might be different. It's right there.
Okay, your picture is completely different than ours.
Yeah, it's different than ours, Barton.
Therein lies the confusion, gentlemen. Barton, that's correct.
Would you come say that?
Why not, Bobby? Why not?
He's trying to keep us long.
I know.
Okay, got it.
Thanks, Barton.
Thanks, Barton.
We'll be working with them to get a special use permit.
Any other questions, Barton?
It'll be piped over there?
Yes, it'll be piped on.
It's really shallow in there. When we lost the road with Sandy and Irene, I mean, if it wasn't for that channel, the emergency ferry wouldn't have been, wouldn't have to prayer get within three miles of that place.
Yep, and I think they were able to get through the ferry division, but it is tight for them to get through right now.
This is, this is necessary.
All right. Go ahead. So you said they were going to do the basin because of metals in the?
The Corps believes there's heavy metals in the basin. And so therefore, they will not pipeline it to a disposal facility.
And so we just leave them there?
That, that channel is just left as is. We could do some additional testing on Dare County's dime. Obviously, we could do some additional testing. If it's actually, if there are heavy metals, we'd have to take it to an approved disposal facility. We'd probably have to excavate it and truck it to an approved disposal facility.
Is there a preliminary figure? Is there a guesstimate, best, best guesstimate as to what kind of material might be in there?
Ken and CPU would have to actually go in there and do some rigro testing to see what kind of metals are in there, materials. But right now, the Corps believes there are. So they would stop essentially before you get into that, that basin.
Hopefully, it'd be a minimal amount and we're not talking about, I can't imagine what would put any kind of massive, kind of that kind of material in there. Should be just a concentrated area, but we'll have to find out.
Yeah, but I did want to, I guess, manage expectations on this, that this is just going to pretty much be for the emergency ferry channel. Into the basin won't be dredged and we won't be taking the material from there as of right now.
Barton, you said they, they believe that there's heavy metals in there.
That's what they were.
You know, I didn't realize this had become a religion. But my question is on that, why wouldn't they test it so they'd know what's in there? So that would give us some direction as to how to move forward with doing it ourselves and get, taking it to a proper disposal facility or something. I don't, I don't understand that.
Yeah, they had originally stated that it was, had heavy metals. And if we want to test it and, and do some vibrocore testing and some rigro testing, we can go in there and prove it to them, but they are not going to do it themselves based on 30, 40 years ago, what they tell me, that there are, there were heavy metals at that point.
Yeah, County Manager.
We're going to dredge the area that he's talking about. If we would like to dredge or have dredge the basin, then we've got to get testing done. And we've got to get permits to do that dredge project separate apart from the project that this is funding. So that would be another day, another project if we choose to do that.
So the basin, is the basin in good shape? There's not a problem with the basin at this point?
It's about four, five feet.
Is it enough?
I haven't heard complaints as of yet. I think they take pretty shallow draft boats in there. I'm assuming insane seafood and whoever else uses it.
Yeah, the ferries will be fine.
Ferry, oh yeah, ferries is going to get down. We're going to get the ferries down to 12 foot, 12 foot deep. It's just going to be that basin is not going to be dredged.
All right. Do we have a motion to authorize a submission of DEQ shallow draft application and adopt the resolution?
So.
It's a motion by Commissioner Tobin. It's been seconded by, I believe, Commissioner Couch and Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Thanks, Barton.
Thank you all. Thank you, Barton.
Sit tight, Barton.
Yes, sit tight.
Yeah, hang on.
You're next. Hank, come back.
Which one?
Item 10. These are the Coastal Storm Mitigation Grants. Mr. Chairman, there's three of those there. There's three resolutions there. I don't read those unless you like them. They're verbatim what I just read, only the dollar amounts and change. And so for us to move forward and take those grants, you need to approve those resolutions.
So we have a resolution for multi-town Avon Village and Buxton Village projects.
Correct.
Okay. It's a pleasure to the board to adopt.
Aye.
Motion by Commissioner Couch, seconded by Commissioner House. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Barton. That one was hard.
I'll talk so much next time.
Item 11 is Dare County Compensation and Classification Study. We had the presentation a couple of weeks ago with our consultants and we went through and you all asked questions. And we wanted to give some time for you to consider the information that you'd receive, look at the spreadsheets that we provided for you and so on. If you're prepared to move forward with that today, then what we would need you to do is to authorize us to move forward to implement the pay and classification study. By implementation, what we would be asking for is that you authorize, Dave and I'd issue budget amendments to take 562,242 dollars out of the fund balance to cover implementation on January the first. And then be aware that in the next year's budget, we've got to find 2.3 million dollars to implement it for the years that follow. And so those would be what you're approving, Dave?
We need authorization for all the other funds listed also.
Right, okay. And then you, you see on the, I think there's a sheet that you have that has the funds, the general fund, CND, sanitation.
Seven funds, yes.
Yeah, I need authorization to do the same for all seven funds.
Okay. All right, floor is open for discussion. Question count.
So we'll be acting on a, on a step one, but there will be more steps to follow?
No, when you do this today.
I'm talking about the 562, the two million more that we're going to need to fund down the road. That would be a two.
Once you do this, you have committed to doing that in the budget. So next year's budget, that's the first priority. The first thing that we do in the budget is cover that 2.3 million.
And then we either find the funding or cut spending elsewhere.
All right. I'm good. Thank you.
I think our growth will cover it now.
I make motion to adopt.
All right. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to adopt. It's presented. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. The floor is open for further discussion. Not that it's relevant to this motion apart, but our consultant asked us to look at some other issues down the road. And I would hope that this board would be amenable to taking that on as soon as possible as well. It's not any part of this motion, but I'd want to make clear that we need to address that as well.
Unless you all direct a different timeframe, what our plan was, was that once we got all the budget requests in at the end of February and knew kind of where we are, we would have a work. would have a workshop, and those items would be on the budget workshop for us to spend some time figuring out where we're going and
Perfect.
how to prioritize what we need to prioritize.
Perfect. Thank you, Bobby. Any other comments, uh, questions? Those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, that leads us to the consent agenda. Uh, on the consent agenda, we have the approval of amendments from October fifth and October twenty-seventh, the tax collector's report, the authorization to present service weapon to a retiring deputy sheriff. We have to amend the existing, uh, Carolina Health Network Managed Care Contract, late applications for property tax exemptions, scheduled meeting dates for two thousand twenty-three, NC Resilient Coastal Communities Program Grant, Golden Leaf Grant, Roanoke Island Drainage Improvements, and a flood mitigation assistance grant RFQ.
Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chairman. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then item thirteen are your board admit, board appointments. Uh, you have several. Um, the first is the Veterans Advisory Council. The term of Barry L. Holt expired in October. Uh, the Veterans Council recommends Anthony Imperiali be appointed in his place.
Move to appoint Anthony Imperiali.
There's a motion on the floor about a vice chairman to appoint Anthony Imperabelli.
Seconded.
Is there a seconded by Commissioner, Commissioner Couch? Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Uh, next is the Board of Equalization Review. The terms of Nelson Skip Jones, Jonathan Waddell, Jeffrey Scott, Terry Gore, and Charles Evans expire in December. They are all recommended for reappointment.
Pleasure of the board.
Move to reappoint all.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to reappoint all. Second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Uh, next is the Special Motor Vehicle Valuation Review Board. Danny Couch, Doc Sawyer, and David Light are all recommended for reappointment for another term.
Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve all three?
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross to approve all three. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
I'm not sure about this Danny Couch guy.
There's, there's further, there's a, we're doing some looking.
I'm a car guy from way back, trust me. Doc, him, myself.
Those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Uh, next is the Dare County Tourism Board. There are a number of these. First is the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce. The chamber recommends, in order of preference, the following is their representatives, Richard Hess and Myra Latbone.
I believe, uh, Mr. Bamboz is eligible for reappointment, but we only received two nominations from the, this, um, from the chamber. Normally, this is not in the bylaws, but it's something we've requested in the prior years, is that we get three nominations, and I'm curious as to why. He's eligible for reappointment as to why he wasn't, uh, his name was not on the list, so my suggestion is to go back to the chamber and ask them for the three submissions and an explanation as to why his name was not submitted.
Do you need a motion on that?
Uh, no, I think it's just, my suggestion is not to, just to table this. Well, yeah, it is a motion to table. Until we get some answers, yes.
Motion to table.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch.
Seconded.
Any, it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the letter from the president of the chamber. If you need anything else from us, please feel free to contact. So we shall contact.
We shall contact. Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Uh, next is the Outer Banks Hotel Motel Association. The association recommends, in order of preference, the following, uh, Tanya Cohen, Stacia Hathaway, and Peggy Shin.
Move to point. Tanya Cohen.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor about a vice chair.
Seconded.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Town of Duck. They recommend that Monica Thibodeau be reappointed.
Motion to reappoint.
Okay, motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
Where are we? I'm lost. I'm sorry.
Well, Duck, Duck, we're still on the Visas Bureau.
Oh, I'm ba, I'm.
Town of Duck.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I got, uh, turned around here.
Okay.
All righty.
All right, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Uh, next is the Town of Southern Shores. They, uh, recommend that Leo Holland be reappointed.
To reappoint.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner, uh, Vice Chairman Overman. It's been seconded by Commissioner House to reappoint. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Uh, next is the Town of Mania. They recommend, in order of preference, Commissioner Ruth Stetson, Commissioner Terry Wickerson, and Commissioner Todd Clissold.
Commissioner Todd Clissold.
Motion on, motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman for Todd Clissold. It's been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Uh, next is from Hatteras Island. Robinson's term expires and is eligible for reappointment.
Move to reappoint.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to reappoint. It's been seconded by Commissioner
Bateman.
Bateman. Any further discussion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That ends the tourism board. We move on to the Elder Adult Services Advisory Council.
No, we'll get there.
The terms of Mary Pendle and Melissa Turney expire this month. The council recommends reappointment of Mary Ten, Mary Pendle and the appointment of Emily Gould.
Uh, move to appoint Mary Pendle and Emily Gould to this committee, to this council.
Good. Motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross. It's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Uh, next is the Virginia Estillit Community Center Advisory Board. The nominating committee recommends Jennifer Phillips to complete the term of Samantha Locke.
Move, move.
Motion on the floor by a vice chairman to approve. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hear, any, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then the Dare County Transportation Advisory Board. The, the board recommends the appointment of Tiffany Herring to complete the term of Stephanie Webb.
Pleasure of the board.
Move to point.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
This covers all of the board appointments for November and December and January. Uh, you have four terms expiring on the Working Waterman Commission. And with that, that'd be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, county manager. I appreciate that. That brings us to item fourteen, which is commissioner's business, and I would, uh, ask the Commissioner Ross if he wouldn't mind kicking that off today.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna go first. Uh, let me just go down my list quickly here. On August, oh, sorry, October twenty-seventh, we held our regularly scheduled audit committee meeting. There were no items of concern. I want to advise the board that our financial operation is being extraordinarily well-run. I see Mr. Clausen there, and I want to point out to he, Sally DeFosse, and Ernie DiBarrio, our auditor. Guys are doing a fantastic job. The audit committee was smooth, uneventful, which are always the best kind of audit committees. So thank you, Dave. Thank you, Ernie. Thank you, Sally. Where's Barton and Dustin? It's kind of a big deal that just went on right here, guys.
Yep.
I got through the, the deck in preparation, and I said, hey, am I reading this right? Did we just get eight million dollars in grants? And they said, yeah. Barton and Dustin drove this thing for Buxton and Avon and the Northern Beaches. So guys, fantastic. I just want to make sure everybody realizes, this is a big deal. So thank you. That was terrific.
Absolutely.
Uh, Virginia Tillet Center. We had an earlier representative group, especially from Special Olympics. Let me just tell you, guys, we were just, we, they, were just awarded another five years, five-year certification of excellence award from the state of North Carolina. These are not handed out very often and not easily. This is their third consecutive year. Sandy Pace, her team, guys, they set the gold standard over there at that center, and I'm calling them out for the level of excellence that they're determining. So that was fantastic. Uh, November sixteenth, at noon, everybody know what's happening, right?
Community foundation anniversary.
You're close. That's the next day, the seventeenth. This is the Veterans Day celebration on the sixteenth.
Well.
So yes.
Veterans Day is actually the eleventh.
It is, but the noon luncheon is on the sixteenth.
That's correct.
Where you and I would be, I'm sure, as well as others among us. So I just wanted to call that out. And last thing, on November the thirteenth, it's a Sunday. It is at two PM, and the gentle expert memory care folks have a candlelight ceremony. Oh, I just blanked on the location. It's the church at like mile post thirteen on the ocean side. I'll look it up and come back to you. It's a great ceremony. It recognizes those providing for individuals who are still with us and have passed from memory-related illnesses. So that's the gentle expert memory care folks, Gail Sinesso and her team.
That's roughly mile post eleven, isn't it?
Saint Andrews?
Saint Andrews by the sea. Thank you, Dorsey Esther. Saint Andrews by the sea. I blanked out for a moment.
Is mile post eleven, is she?
What did I say, thirteen?
Okay, well, jockeys, anyway, we're talking about mile post.
Close enough. Saint Andrews by the sea.
It's really close.
It is. Thank you, guys. I'm done, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Uh, Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first thing, uh, introduced this earl, or brought it up earlier, um, about the, uh, the herring season. And, uh, we have a letter of draft, and I want to present this so that we can hopefully get this going. Um, it's addressed to, um, Ms. Viser and Ms. Rawls from the Marine Fr, to the Marine, uh, Fisheries and also Department of DEQ. Um, and I'll, and I'll read this. As Dare County Board of Commissioners has adopted a motion requesting the Division of Marine Fisheries to consider reopening commercial herring fishing in the Alamo Sound and its tributaries. This season has been closed since two thousand and six, although the North Carolina's two coastal border states allow herring fishing in their waters. The board requests that the Marine Fisheries Commission consider reopening the season, uh, at least on a trial basis. And the board believes that this fishing studies would support a reopening. Such a reopen would positively impact the Dare County, uh, economy, and thanks for your consideration. As a matter, I'd like to make a motion to have that approved, signed, and sent.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion on the floor. It's been, uh, uh, a motion by Commissioner, Vice Chairman Overman. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Uh, next thing that's come up on the Marine Fisheries Commission, uh, they have two, uh, two rule set requirements that are, uh, being proposed. Uh, one is for the classification of self-it, shellfish growing waters in and around marinas, docking facilities, and other mooring areas. It is proposed for readoption and amendment to help ensure that North Carolina remains in full compliance with the national requirement so that North Carolina shellfish can continue to be sold, uh, throughout interstate commerce. Uh, the proposed amendments would also allow the North Carolina Marine Fisheries to determine a necessary buffer closure for shellfish growing waters in and around these areas based on more specific public health-based rationale and make implementation and enforceable of required clear. So, um, that's one, one of the laws, we're, we're, one of the recommendations that we're looking closely at to find, find out exactly what they're trying to do with it. They were gonna have a public hearing on these, uh, but that's been postponed. Uh, the second rule is proposed with an amendment to mutilated fin fish requirements. Amendments would provide flexibility to manage variable conditions for the use of fin fish as cut bait by simplifying the rule so that only species subject to a possession limit are subject to the mutilated fin fish requirements unless otherwise specific in the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission rule or a proclamation issued under the authority of the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission.
Okay, I don't know what you just said. Do that again.
That's too many words.
I know. That's what I'm saying.
Basically, what I'll break, I'll break it down to it. Um, if you have like, say a crab pot, there you go, okay, and you want to bait it with fin fish, that's been mutilated to put, put in there.
Little spots, things like that.
Little spots, stuff like that.
Real little stuff.
Yeah. It can only be spe, species that are subject to a possession limit.
That's the dumbest thing I've ever heard. No, I don't understand. You just lost me completely. So.
Yeah, we're getting these.
Special limits. Well, special limit would be a baby, like a baby flounder.
Exactly.
You know, and there's no, that means you can't find any product to put in a crab pot, is what you're saying.
Right. So if you got a baby flounder that does not meet the criteria of what you can possess, you can't mutilate it and put it in the crab pot.
So you can't. How do they come up with it? Cause it's not.
So you can't, can't possess any, any, any fish that legally cannot be possessed. So.
Can't possess a fish.
Again.
Possessed.
Mm-hmm.
Younger than a football man.
Yep. So those are some of the things we're looking at that have just, that have come, come up to light here, uh, recently. Um, as you know, as you can well tell, it's a go-around, go-around, go-around. It's ju, it's just, some things that come out, just.
I believe cluster is the word.
Yes, yes. And, uh, also, uh, I'll, I'll finish up with, uh, our day in history. Franklin Delano Roosevelt won his fourth term as president, which started the thing of presidential term limits to two. Um, and, uh, Franklin Delano Roosevelt, uh, kinda hid his, uh, health, uh, concerns throughout the election. Uh, once he was sworn into office, as we all know, he passed away three months afterwards. So, uh, the only, only president to ever sit for four terms. So that's our day in history.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, House. I would ask the vice chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we had no service pins awarded at this meeting, which is highly unusual. I believe it's a first in all the like, in the number of years that I've served on this, on this board. Um, and it's, and it's almost unbelievable. I mean, we're, we're used to having.
No, I did too.
We're used to having up to hundreds of years of service, and, and this, this month we have, we have, uh, we have no service pins, and it's, uh, it's, it's almost unbelievable. But that's, uh, I, I, I think that just puts more favor on the months when we do. But, but anyway, um, October and early November have been, um, reasonably busy months. Um, on October the twelfth, Commissioner Couch, Commissioner Tobin, and manager Outman and I attended the Waters Conference in Wilmington, uh, that was put on by Congressman Murphy and the congressman from down there. Is it?
David Rousher.
Rousher. And, um, just a discussion of general, uh, water-related, uh, issues in eastern North Carolina, uh, and they are sizable, and they're sizable north to south and just all the way inland. It, it was, it was quite a discussion, quite a number of papers and panels that discuss those, uh, those issues. Uh, obviously, on October thirteenth, we had the Miss Katie christening, which I'm sure, uh, Commissioner Tobin will talk about in more detail. On October the twentieth, Attorney General Josh Stein was here to discuss the opioid settlement, and during his, uh, discussions, uh, recognized Dare County for all the work that's being done here, and indicated, uh, pretty, pretty solidly that, that we're way ahead of, of the majority of counties in North Carolina with the things that we're doing here and the number of task forces that we have working on this, uh, particular issue with, uh, substance use and, uh, mental health. On October twenty-fifth, uh, county manager and I attended the IEI conference in Greenville, which was basically, uh, you could summarize it as an education expansion, uh, in eastern North Carolina. And it, uh, a number of counties were there, representatives from those counties, and general discussions about what can be done to improve and expand educational opportunities, um, in eastern North Carolina and particularly northeastern North Carolina. It was, uh, it was a good, good meeting. Um, on November, sorry, on October eighteenth, the Division of Marine Fisheries held a meeting in this very room, uh, and it was basically a discussion with charter captains, uh, regarding, as it turns out, the closure of, uh, rockfish season. There were a few other subjects, but that dominated, uh, the discussion. And, I don't know how to put this delicately, but, uh, I, it was pitiful. The, 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 uh, information that. The, the, the information that that crowd brought forth and their reasoning for closing the season down here. It was pointed out by one of the, one of the fishermen, I think it was Reece Decker, who said that the Roanoke River portion that is controlled by the Wildlife Resources Commission over the past few years have had three rockfish seasons, while the Alamo Sound area, which is controlled by Division of Marine Fisheries, has only had one season. Now, to put that in some perspective, the season that occurs in the Roanoke River portion is during the spawning season. So they're taking a fish that they consider to be endangered, if you will, certainly threatened. And they are allowing people to fish in the spawning grounds during the spawning season.
Okay.
Now.
I'm not a fisherman. I don't know much, but that sounds insane to me, Mr. Reston.
It not only sounds insane, it is insane.
All right.
Mr. Stecker also pointed out, using the Marine Fisheries, Division Marine Fisheries' own data, that release mortality in the Roanoke River portion is three times higher than it is in the Alamo Sound section. Now, these guides that take people in there or folks that just go fishing in the Roanoke River area, again, in the spawning area during the spawning season, don't drag their boats fifty, sixty miles, put it in the water, go out there, catch one fish that's legal fishing, go home. No self-respecting fisherman does that. They're going to catch multiple fish while they're out there because catching fish is fun, and that's why you go fishing. Unless you, like me, and just like to eat them. But again, with a three times rate mortality in a spawning area during a spawning season, it just adds and piles up, that it makes no sense. Well, I can tell you that those boat captains, one of whom was a young man, who has a family. And I think they canceled this season just a few weeks prior to the season starting. It was supposed to start October first, told the lady who heads up the Division Marine Fisheries that he had had to send back twenty-five charters, deposits that he had received. And if you assume that it's around $500, that's pretty significant income that he had to, to, to return.
Let me assume she was unmoved.
It's, totally. It, it, again, there was, there was discussion after discussion. And I posed the same question to her as to why they would allow a season and have three seasons in the, in the spawning grounds and only one season here over the past, I think it was three years. And she talked for ten minutes and never answered the question. To the point that a couple of the fishermen out there said, "It's a simple question. Why would you allow this?" Anyway, it was never answered. So as you all know, they came back a few weeks later and opened the season November first. So we now have a season that is open in Alamo Sound region from November first. I think it's for a month or until some quota is, is caught. So just wanted to pass that along. Our charter fishermen here are really, really taking a hit on this unnecessarily and, and just no, no common sense applied to it seemingly whatsoever. Moving on from that, on November third last week, the North Carolina Council of Churches met at St. Andrews and provided some faith-based training for clergy in Dare County regarding substance abuse and mental health issues. And this was put on by Saving Lives Task Force and, and some of the other task forces here in the county that are working on this. It was quite a good meeting, lasted from about nine until eleven. Quite a good presentation by these folks. And it's in an attempt to get the churches and clergy specifically involved in, in working through, helping us work through this opioid crisis. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Good input. Commissioner May?
I'm just glad to be here.
Commissioner Couch?
Well, mine could be a little bit longer, Urban, but I'm glad I get to sit next to you all the time. I was listening with interest there with Stumpy Point with the IGA stuff. Just want to bring to this board's attention, and hopefully we can get an action item out of it going forward. Avon Channel running out to Cape Channel and the reef there is also part of this. I believe it's part of it, isn't it? Okay, thank you. We're going to have to address, if that project is going to come to fruition, we're going to have to address what we're going to do with the benef, as a beneficial use of that resource. And what I want to bring to the attention of the board here is, we've got a pretty sensitive area. It's not pretty sensitive, it's a real sensitive area there that's going to be needing some attention in terms of sound nourishment. If you're familiar with Hatters, you're southbound. You've come out of Avon into the seashore. You've got what is called Canadian Hole, or actually, excuse me, it's the Hallover Parking Area there. Okay, you go a little bit south, I mean literally just a baseball toss away from that. It's a very vulnerable area there on the shore side, on the sound side. The Cape Hatter Selector Cooperative has a couple of poles that are already in the water. You go a little bit further there, you get to the parking area there that is Kite Point. And then, once you pass Kite Point, which has a little bit of a bump of, of ground, then you come to another very sensitive area that even though the power poles are not in the water, they're really close. And then you come, and that, not quite half a mile, it's a little over a quarter mile, not quite half a mile. Then you come to the access there for vehicles. My, my, what I want to point out is this. There's, there was about, beginning with July fourth weekend up until Labor Day, there was about a hundred, a hundred and fifty people a day that were using that. We had a stretch there where the ocean was really rough. There were flags out, families that come down with young kids, senior citizens, people that just want to take a prudent approach to the ocean, which is always a good thing. They go to that beach, but they're running out of area there to actually recreate, which is what Kite Point Parking Lot was put there. Specifically, it was put for the kiteboarders and stuff and the windsurfers and all. But a lot of people are taking advantage of that nice little area there. It's a public safety issue in that we're losing so much ground there that people are taking, driving over the dune and parks, park service is kind of stretched. But that area needs to be addressed. It also needs to be addressed from the fact that we're dropping in a pretty hefty water project. We're putting a water line in there to alleviate some problems with breakage there. So I, I hope that we will pursue. I don't know if it, we need to go through the Dare County Waterways, but I want to bring it to the attention of this board. Let's see, and working with the park, let's see what we can do of getting a beneficial use of resource there and putting some sand in there so it can protect our water line, continue to provide recreational activities, and also make sure that we've got power. We talk about electricity when we need it. We talk about the ocean. We're always focused on the ocean, and rightly so with all the energy that's over there. But we're going to be having some sound, shoreside problems here going forward as well. So I'd just like to see something done with that going forward. And Barton, if it's okay, we'll start from the bottom and go up. And we can start with the waterways. But that's a $1.6 million project over there. The Corps has, when it, when it comes, the Corps has indicated that they want to improve and start focusing on some recreational activities. I can tell you that a lot of people use that area. You're kayakers, you're small boaters, people that just like to come in there and, and hang around and crab a little bit. Do we have a lot of shrimp boats and trawl boats running out of there, small commercial fishermen? Yes, or small commercial fishermen, not as much as in the past. But that's the money that's been appropriated there, so let's take advantage of it. Going to defer also to Jim on the N C Byway. But our county manager is the chair of that group. There's some buzz going on with it. Very good meetings this week. I'd like to see that kind of vibrancy going on. And you're seeing unity from the top of the coast, from the Virginia line all the way down to the South Carolina line. It was a very enjoyable experience. It, it always is. It's a lot of heavy-duty scientific information, but, you know, they do such a good job of make, of putting it in layman's terms. So it was, was good. Bobby did a great job. The superintendent of the Park Service did. His settlement plan down there was very well done. We had presentations on the Avon. We had presentations on our entire beach nourishment activities there. And so our participation in that is good. One good nugget that came out of that is that it looks like going forward, the coast will be developing, for lack of a better word, a caucus. The Wilmington Securities, the Carolina Beaches, the Emerald Isles, running right up into Dare County. We're going to put together our collective resources and our, that willingness to work together. So that can really help with three hundred and twenty-some miles of coastline, oceanic coastline here in this state. Some good things can come out of that. Lastly, Veterans Day. I know you're up here on this end of the beach. They're going to be doing some things over the Virginia Estillit. But I'll be also at the one in Hatters, which they're meeting today. There's a little bit of a trepidation about what may or may not happen with this system coming up the coast. It's been really warm. Some of your old timers don't like the mix of warm weather. And then here comes some cold weather along with wind, and it can be a whole lot of energy. So they're meeting today to decide whether or not they're going to have their Veterans Days meeting on the eleventh, excuse me, on the ninth, day after tomorrow, at Cape Hatter School. But on behalf of the board, I'll be there. I need to take a breath. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch. Very good input. Commissioner Tobin?
Okay, I'm going to start off with the commissioning of the Miss Katie. It was a really nice ceremony. It was a really kind of almost a tearjerker, if you know the story about Katie and how the dredge got her name. I think that Judson and his family handled it really well. Could have, could have been very tearful. It was tearful, but.
It was.
It was a somber occasion, but a happy occasion all at once. One thing that's great about the Miss Katie is she came in under budget, which you can't say that about a lot of shipbuilding. We had allocated $15 million for it, and it came in just under $15 million, which is amazing. She's fully operational now. She's been out dredging on the bar pretty consistently. They've been anchoring up down there, so it's, they're getting a better production rate. And the one hiccup that we've had is that alternate channel. The alternate channel, you know, was, we spoke about. They found some material that was 50/50 sand silt, which isn't allowed. They want somewhere in the neighborhood of 90/10. So they put a stop order on dredging there for all of the core dredges and our dredge. It was pretty much resolved on Friday. The Corps sent their plan to all the state agencies and gave the state agencies 24 hours to respond. And we didn't really get much response back. So the, the merit is up here as we speak, en route to the, the new channel. And hopefully, she'll be able to work there. She's going to take it down to like seven and a half foot, and then the Miss Katie will go in there and take it down to 10 foot. So that's, that's very, very encouraging. It was mentioned that we've gone to the Waters Conference. I'd like to thank Congressman Murphy and Congressman Rousher for starting that and pointing it in the right direction. It's going to continue on, and it, it's really, really a good thing. It brings a lot of people together. And it's different than the Byways Conference that we go to. And I'd like to congratulate Bobby on his new appointment as chairman of the Byways, or my condolences, whichever.
He's doing a great job.
Yeah, it, it was really a good conference. Not only is it good educationally, you learn a lot of stuff at every one, but also, there's all kinds of town managers, county managers, all kinds of people there that you meet and discuss things with. We, we had several towns from down south that want to use the Miss Katie and already have a permit in place. There's also several places down there that are really interested in doing the same thing that we did and joining together. There's not any one inlet down there that has enough work for a Miss Katie. But if you combined them all, it'd be perfect. So they're talking about forming a group and, and, you know, going to the state and getting it going. So it's pretty interesting. Also, the Byways Conference, I was shocked. Dare County is in the forefront of that thing. Everybody's amazed that we can get all this stuff done and not really rely on funding from anybody else. And people were very, very interested in how it was done and very complimentary to our county with its ability to do it. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Tobin. I just have a few more things that I didn't mention under Chairman's comments. And that is, it's been mentioned already, but tomorrow is Election Day. I would encourage you all to exercise your right to vote tomorrow. I know we've had early voting for a few weeks, but tomorrow is Election Day. And please take the time, if you haven't voted already, to do so. There's about 31,886 voters in Dare. As of the last count, 8,841 had voted early. That's about 28%. That's higher than most normal midterm elections. So that's a good stat. Glad, glad to see so many folks out voting. Saturday, November the 12th, is the 150th anniversary celebration of Bodie Island Light. It's a ceremony that'll take place at about 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon. It's also been mentioned that Commissioner Ross mentioned that there's a luncheon for the veterans on the 16th.
Yes, sir.
And also that Veterans Day is the 11th. I have already sent out, prepared a Veterans Day message, a Chairman's message. I believe, Dorothy, you all are getting that out tomorrow. So that Veterans message will be out. Community Foundation has a celebration of 40 years in operation. As you've heard this morning, over the years, in the 40 years, they put out $12 million in scholarships. That's pretty substantial money to our, those in our community. I attended a quarterly BRAC meeting. You know, we have, we're fortunate, we're blessed, once again, to have our military, Air Force, and Navy bombing ranges here in Dare County. And one of the major things that came up that John Bennett, who is the Navy Dare manager, announced that the Navy is spending $22 million at the Navy bombing range to upgrade the old targets system out there. And they're going to add some new targets as well. And that'll all be ongoing. If you've never been out there, and I have, and I've been right there in the middle of where they bomb in the range, and you see them jets coming at you, it is absolutely incredible. John mentioned to me, if you've never done it, call him up, he'll take you out there. Now, they'll probably, with this expansion, they won't be obviously doing any live ordnance, but they'll, will be doing practice runs until all this work is done. But take advantage and go out there and, and stand in the middle of that where they bomb. And that jet's about 300 to 400 feet above you. It'll, it'll blow your eardrums out. It's just incredible to watch them. But I, I was very, I was very, I thank the Air Force members and the Navy members that come to the meeting for their service. And this is critical. With what's going on in our country and what we're facing militarily and, and with other, other countries, it's critical that we have these training facilities that our pilots can train at and be able to do this. And I couldn't help but think, my wife and I take a walk just about every day. It's a three-mile walk from our home around the Wright Brothers Memorial. around the Wright Brothers Memorial. I couldn't help but think yesterday morning, or yesterday afternoon when we walked, man, if the Wright Brothers could stand in the middle of this damn bombing range. And can you imagine what they would have? That would, I mean, just blow them out.
Mm-hmm. They'd have been, they'd have picked it apart.
Yeah.
They'd be relevant today if they were still around.
That's right. It's incredible. But anyhow, uh, thanks to the Air Force and Navy for that. It's a, uh, we're blessed to have that in our area. Uh, Tim Midget did, uh, Cafferty, excuse me, did mention the, uh, Tourism Summit that I attended. The wave of the future is cell phones with reservations and stuff. We are, we're a tourist destination, but ninety-six percent of the tourists that are, come to the Outer Banks is we're drive, drive destination. And their concern is down the road with, um, electric vehicles. And stop and think outside the box. If that's the case, you know, a lot of these manufacturers are saying twenty, thirty-five, whatever, that a large percentage of their vehicles are gonna be electric. Well, we gotta start thinking about where to go charge all these vehicles.
The President last week said they will be shutting down coal plants all across America.
Yeah, yeah.
So when they do, there won't be a concern of where to charge them. There won't be anything coming into the charging station.
That's right.
So I think we have to address problems and prioritization first.
We're gonna use fairy dust.
That's right.
So perhaps when all of the wind farms replace all of the coal plants,
Right.
we can then institute a, an emergency charging.
And I can't help myself, but I'm gonna do it, guys.
Do it.
I said this at the beginning, under my comments, our board is one hundred percent dedicated to make essential housing happen. Once again, we have public comment, and we got a NIMBY standing in front of us telling us that this is not the right neighborhood in Nag's Head, when in fact, that neighborhood has been zoomed multifamily housing for years.
A lot of misinformation.
I'm telling you, and I said this earlier, get your facts straight. Get your facts straight. Not there, but he wants us to do it in Mania. Okay? Not in my backyard. Not in my backyard.
What did Mania tell us?
Yeah, well, Mania says the same thing, but in, in all due respect to them, but, uh, uh, in, in, in deference to Mr. Bragg's comments, uh, he needs to get his facts straight. And, uh, and our police, fire, EMS, all of these folks can qualify. He needs to get his facts straight with respects to Lytec projects and, and respects to, uh, market ratings. We can provide district with the people that I spoke about earlier today. Get your facts straight. And, um, um, with respects to Ms. Midget and Mr. Head's comments, um, and Ms. Midget just within the last ten minutes had to get up and leave, but I wanted to respond to her and Mr. Head, that we'll do exactly what we've done. This board will do exactly what we've done with any other project that we've done with respects to beach nourishment, and that is, we'll look at, we'll look at it, we'll see what the feasibility of it is and see where we go from there. I'm not sure if Mr. Head or Ms. Midget is aware of the fact that I formed a task force to look at NC twelve. Um, that's a whole different issue with respect to twelve and beach nourishment. But we identified, the subcommittee that Bobby ran has identified the hotspots. We, we put that report out. We're waiting for some feedback from the task force members. We'll hold a task force meeting to discuss the hotspots, uh, on NC twelve. But in addition to nourishment, we'll do exactly what we've done with any other project, and that's look at the feasibility of doing so in Rhode Anthony. Um, with that being said, uh, Thanksgiving is one of, is my favorite holiday, is being with family. And we have a lot in Dare County. At least I know I have a lot to be extremely thankful for. And, um, God bless this country. God bless what we do. God bless our military to protect us and our, and those that are away from their families during the Thanksgiving season. Thank you for what you do, veterans, and thank you for, for our military, um, to protect us and save us. We, we are in some very troubled times, and we need to be reaching out to our All Might as to, um, looking after us and, and hoping that we can get through, uh, some of the things that we face. And I wanna wish everybody here a very happy Thanksgiving and enjoy your time with your family, because this is special. With that being said, County Manager, do you have anything for us?
Yes, sir. Real brief. Um, I wasn't gonna bring it up, but Commissioner Tobin did. Uh, the North Carolina Beach Inlet Waterways Association is a, a group that encompasses almost the entire coast of North Carolina. It includes stakeholders from all parts. It's the local governments, it's, uh, real estate companies, it's dredge companies, whoever has an interest in a stake, uh, in the environmental groups are members. There's lots of members. It's a very large group. Um, I've served as the chair for the last year, got re-elected as the chair this coming year. I bring it up because it is a large group, and it gives us an opportunity. It focuses on our beaches, on our inlets, and on the intercoastal waterway. Those are the three areas where they're, have the expertise. If we have issues, if people in the community have issues, if you all have issues that we want to get out, let me know, and we can get them before that group, and we can start. We have a voice, and we have opportunities to be heard where those issues impact us. Um, Jim has been very active. Commissioner Oberman has been very active. Uh, Commissioner Couch has been very active in going to those meetings and, and letting them know where Dare County stands, where we look, and frankly, they look to us as one of the leaders in lots of these issues. So, uh, again, it's a good opportunity for us to be heard and, and let me know. Uh, in the same vein, um, I've been reappointed to the Coastal Resources Advisory Council, and so next week, there's the Coastal Resources Commission meeting, and then the Coastal Resources Advisory Council meeting. Coastal Resources Commission is a regulatory agency that regulates all things coast, if you will. Uh, they make the rules. They do all the things from inlets to beach nourishment to you name it, with, involving the coast. The Advisory Council is a group that they appoint of local governments and other stakeholders in the coast to give them advice, bring them information, or vet things that they're looking for from their end as well. Um, and we meet, uh, about every quarter, uh, ahead of the Coastal Resources Commission. So if you have coastal issues that are broader than just what NC Byways, uh, does, then let me know those things as well, and we can bring those before the Advisory Council, and hopefully before the Coastal Resources Commission as well. So just to let you know, we, we have some opportunities, and we have a voice, and, and so it's good for us, and we can exercise those things.
Can we get you appointed to the Marine Fisheries Commission?
I think you'd need to-
Not a chance.
To either side of you. Somebody knows a lot more about that than I do.
A target on your back.
Yeah. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Kenny Bancher.
Bobby, question for you. Um, and, and this is related back to the housing, uh, issue, and specifically as it relates to Lytec. Um, what would be involved in going through probably Senator Tillis and whoever gets elected, uh, as our senator, um, and, um, Representative Murphy, regarding getting the, the baseline changed or the percentages changed that would expand the, uh, the range of, of salaries that would be, uh, applicable and, and still, uh, be able to use Lytec funding? Yeah, almost like a, I hate to say the, use the word overhaul, but basically look at it, I don't know how long ago Lytec was created, and maybe those numbers worked pretty good then, but with the stuff we're going through now, uh, just burp the word inflation out, maybe used too much, but I mean, there's things are just advancing faster than the old rules are adapting to them. And I don't know if it's a, a, a base plus a percentage, or increase the, the eighty, twenty type stuff. What, what's the chance of getting that?
I'd have to address the legislation that originally created the low-income housing tax credits and either amend or revise, wouldn't they, Bobby? I'd have to, through both houses.
How could we ask them for that?
Okay, so, understand what Lytec is. Lytec is not a funding source. You don't get any money from the federal government. It's a tax credit to the developer. So the county directly can't take advantage of that. Only the private sector that pays taxes can get that credit. And so they've established this Lytec fund to encourage developers to build that type of housing by giving them tax credits if they do it and they meet certain criteria. Um, one of those criteria is those income requirements that you're talking about. As with any other legislation, if you want to do something different, you would have to go back to Congress and get them to amend the, the tax code to allow that criteria to change to whatever the threshold is you're requesting that change. Um, our experience in Congress is, is very difficult to get something moved through Congress, but, yeah, it can happen. If, if other places are having issues that we're having, then you, you, maybe there's somebody else out there that's looking to do the same thing. I don't know, but you can't-
I'll draft a memo to Speaker Pelosi this afternoon.
You can't start without asking.
Why are you laughing?
It just seemed like, it just seemed like it, it would address some of these issues that we're, we're, we're talking about.
And, and just remember, Lytec is a tax credit, and it, and a Lytec project doesn't have to be all Lytec. It can have other rental rates in the project. It just depends-
That's right.
On how much the tax credit they're looking to get out of the project as to how far they have to go. And so, again, projects that we're looking at don't necessarily have to be Lytec. The other projects that we're looking at-
Are not.
are not gonna have any Lytec.
Right, right.
And so, and so, again, there can be a balance there, and it's just, how do you juggle your dollars?
Yeah, it's difficult to boil this down to a soundbite, I guess is what I would say, Bobby. There are-
Correct.
details and nuances that really guide the actual execution of the project, and a sweeping generalization doesn't-
Right.
accurately portray that.
But the short answer to your question is, it would take congressional action, and, and it would be the same process as any other law that you wanted to change in Congress.
So Bobby, clarification. So would it be safe to say that Woda Cooper could possibly do fifty Lytec over in Mania, and the fifty that they would do on, somewhere on the beach, that could be just market price?
They, they could. Um, the issue becomes, when you calculate the cost to build fifty units, you calculate your revenue source, and we're one of those revenue sources, they're borrowing some money, and they're taking tax credits to put in there as part of their revenue sources. If you take out some of the Lytec, then you've reduced one of those revenue sources, which is the Lytec funding. And so to wind up in the same place with the same margins and everything else, you've gotta replace whatever you lost with, either with our money or with investor money or whatever. So you just gotta, it's really balancing your funds to make it work if you, when you do a mixed project like that. And it, can it be done? Sure, it can be done. Where that would make the money balance, I don't know, until we sat down and said, okay, what is it we wanna do? How many units are there? If you did this many, what does it do to your Lytec? How much does that leave you short? Where can we make it up? And so-
I was just trying, I was trying to address the gentleman's comment. Of that property there, it would not be for a person like the sheriff's deputy.
Right.
Yep. Go ahead, Bobby.
No, I'm done. I, I mean, that's, the answer, it could be done, yes.
The answer is yes, it could well be.
Absolutely.
But the issue, the issue there is, they're kinda throwing the baby out with the bathwater. They're, they're talking about rezoning that, so you couldn't do multifamily there, even though it's been multifamily. So that doesn't give you an opportunity to sit down and say, okay, we wanna do a multifamily. You have some issues. What are your issues? How can we help address those issues? What concerns do you have with this project on this site, and how can we address those cer- concerns in the project? Um, we haven't had an opportunity to have that conversation, or, and may not.
With respects to, with respects to building, and building essential, uh, Lytec, market rate, whatever, you know, in fairness to our constructing, construction industry and our home builders on, you know, on, on the Outer Banks, these single-family homes that they're building, guys, they can't make the numbers work. Number one, they gotta buy the land. The cost, the cost of building the home is extremely high with soft cost. Uh, th- these individual builders can't do this, uh, on the Outer Banks, and, and, and they can't even break even to do that. So in fairness to our local builders, that, that's why you have the Woda Coopers out there, these other folks out there that have done this all over the country. You, you're not gonna be able to do it unless you have some money vested with, um, uh, tax credits. It, it's, it's just that simple, uh, to make it work. But the tax, the credits that we're talking about with Lytec, we're not talking about Section Eight housing. I mean, God bless it, public, get, get the facts, you know? We're, that's not what we're talking about. Uh, and so, um, I'm willing to hold a, um, a town hall to try to get this, uh, try to get this, uh, out, but I can tell you right now, um, um, the, the number of NIMBs versus the folks that want this in our community are far shorter than, than, I, I don't have to tell you guys. You get it every day.
I get it every day. I get it down there.
Emails. Emails. You get it in public when you go to the store. I mean, uh-
Four or five conversations a day.
Um, it, it's absolutely ridiculous, and it's, and it's, and, and I said it, and I mean it, and it's, and it, and it, and it's factual that you don't want these folks as neighbors, and you don't want them in, you don't want them in, uh, in your, in your neighborhood. And that is, makes me sick to my stomach when that message is sent. And, you know, we, we, uh, we all need to look after, uh, help our fellow man. I mean, the stories that I hear, I mean, that was just one that I spoke about this morning, where a gentleman, um, living in a garage. Living in a, he's a fireman.
Bob, you heard one. There are hundreds.
There are hundreds like that.
Hundreds.
Hundreds like that.
I, I did that when I was with EMS.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, and how many, how many, how many police, I mean, how many firefighters have two jobs?
We can do better.
Absolutely, we can do better. So I can tell you, um, bring it on, and, and make sure you get the comments right, uh, Murray Helen and Voice, uh, because bring it on Facebook. I can take it, folks. Come on after me, 'cause, uh, I, I can fight you. And, 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 and I, you, you can say all the nasty things you want about our board and myself. We're committed. We're gonna make it happen, one way or the other. Uh, Ms. Hester, they, they got me fired up. They got me fired up.
I don't have any items to bring up. Thank you.
Finance Director, Mr. Plosen, do you have anything?
If I could do two real quick, I'd be, you probably already know, but your consent agenda included a two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand of grants awarded to the county.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That, he's still there. That was all barred.
Right.
And then the beach nourishment grants, um, the one million for the town projects, all of these require one-for-one match, and, and your match is already in the beach nourishment model, so that you'll see a two-million-dollar project coming sometime in the future, but it's not a benefit to the, to, to the plan. Um, there's a million, five-fifty-seven for Buxton. Um, the key date for us with these grants is July the ninth. That's when it's eligible. So we'd started these projects beforehand. We're fine on Buxton, so we'll have a million, five-fifty-seven benefit to the fund. Avon, the grant was five million, five-hundred-seventy-six thousand, and I think we'll be able to claim five million, about five-point-one million out of that amount, so we won't get the full benefit, but almost.
Yeah, that's if you want.
Those are specific to those projects. They're not available for the other things.
Anything else there?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Well, with that being said, anybody else have anything else they'd like to cover? With that being said, we need a motion to adjourn until December the fifth.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Tobin, seconded by Commissioner House. Those in favor of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most likes that. Motion carries. Motion carries. Please.